Okay, Board of Selectmen's meeting for Tuesday, October 15th, 6:30 PM. Mr. Dede, Mr. Fox, Mr. Moglen and Mr. Steinhardt in attendance. And we're going to proceed on to the first order of business at 6:30.
Thank you and welcome to the Select Board meeting for Tuesday, October 15th, 2019. The first thing is, we'd have is public comments. That's for anybody not on the agenda that would like to make a statement to the Select Board. This would be your opportunity. I'd ask if you are going to make a statement, please stand and give your name and address. Is there anyone here at this time would like to make a public statement?
One at a time.
Don't rest here.
All right. I see none, so we will go on and take care of a few things before we have an appointment at 6:40. So, we'll acknowledge payables warrant number 2011B dated 10/7/1919. Uh, wait a minute. Let's try that again. I think that's a typo.
Yeah, too many 19s.
Right. 10/7/2019 in the amount of $1,350,786.24. We have a payroll warrant number 2008 dated 10/15/2019 in the amount of $230,607.49. And now we need a motion to accept the regular session meeting minutes of 10/119.
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, unanimous. Do we have executive session minutes?
You do, Mr. Chairman.
All right. Mr. Dede? Someone? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, and pass it back. Okay. Then, we still have, oh, we are right on schedule, so we'll go right to the action folder. 1A is the announcement for the annual MMA conference and trade show, which is in Boston. It's January 24th, 25th and 26th. Last year, we had a lot of issues come up and we only had, I believe, you two gentlemen.
And a snowstorm.
In a snowstorm.
We handled it.
And you did a fabulous job, so everyone can start considering whether or not they want to attend. The Finance Committee is aware of this also?
Yep, we'll remind them. Their meeting is on the 28th of this month.
Okay.
Okay.
Okay. 2A is a contract with the Department of Fish and Game, Office of Fishing and Boating, and they were generous enough to give us monies, $6,500, to re-roof the gazebo. That's at the Northwicke Ramp Public Access Facility on Point Grove Road. And we need a motion to reaffirm that we accepted this money.
Someone?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, unanimous. And that's great news because...
Yeah, that had been in the budget.
That had been in the budget, so now saves the local taxpayer some money. 3A is from Southwick Police Department, looks like from Lieutenant Robert Landis. And this is, we need to vote to approve and accept the drug take-back annual grant of approximately $650. And this is an award for the purpose to, of education and proper disposal of prescription drugs.
So...
All in favor?
Sign it, Mr. Chairman.
All right, we will sign it. Done? Joe? All right. The next 4A is a letter from Karen A. De Mayo, who was appointed to the Community Preservation Committee. And she is asking, or submitting her resignation because she has just taken an appointment to fill a vacancy on the Southwick Finance Committee. So we need a motion to accept her resignation.
Someone?
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
We'll sign it. And can we get a little thing for Karen?
You'll do, sir.
Okay.
You would authorize the posting, too?
Yeah, unauthorized the posting.
That's a position we're supposed to fill?
Until May.
Till May.
Till May?
Yep.
So, and does that make him then run as, are they not running for reelection to that position, right?
They'd have to choose if they want to run or not.
They have to go through the caucus and...
Okay, right. Then they'd be just running as a new person on that board.
Right.
The whole board's up.
Yeah, yeah.
Well, only the four. The other five are designees. They remain designees.
Selectman appointees, correct.
Okay.
You're correct.
All right. The next thing, it doesn't have a number on it, and I guess this is from Rick Johnson, motocross. They're going to have an event, they're looking for a one-day liquor license?
Liquor, and entertainment.
And entertainment.
And that's been approved by, or recommended by the lieutenant supervising liquor license agent. So, and he's put the times on it to make sure in terms of what their serving would be, because if you look at the applications attached to his email.
Okay. And this is an event to honor a member. It's involving a fundraiser for veterans.
Yep, it's going to be like a rucksack race where they bring food, donated food.
Okay.
Right, Rick? You're familiar with that, so it's going to be a good cause.
Yep, they're going to use the track, and they're going to run the track, carrying backpacks with all the food in it, and they got the donation. And they're also planning a motorcycle run to go on at the same time.
Do you run in it?
All right. And they're looking for serving hours between noon and 5:00 PM. And I'm looking real quick to see when the date is.
Six.
It's the 20th. It's this, uh...
Yes.
This Sunday.
This weekend coming up.
Right? 20th, Sunday?
Yep.
Okay.
Right here. Sleep pres.
So, we have a lot going on Sunday. We have the animal parade. We have this going on.
Yeah, that's this, this is Sunday.
Right. We had the animal parade, we had this going on. Congregational Church has a concert going on, and I'm sure there's other events going on at the town. So the town...
What's the liquor from 12 to 5?
Uh, noon to 5.
Good. So, the parade starts off at 2.
Right.
So they'll have already been at the Legion.
Right.
You know what I mean? So they won't have that screw-up with the bikes trying to come one way and us trying to go the other.
No.
So that's good. So anything left is the, where is the play or the concert?
Well, unfortunately, you know, because I was talking to Mr. Paul Varari, we digress from this, but he had hoped to use the Congregational Church parking lot for overflow parking, and I had to tell him this morning that that's when the concert's going on, from 2:00, starting at 2:00.
Oh, is it?
You know, so I suggested perhaps he could reach out to the Southwick Inn. They're overflow parking on Granville Road.
We'll be fine. They like to overpark.
Anyways, back to Mr. Johnson's request for this liquor permit and entertainment.
Right, it would be under the WIP 338 organization.
I need a motion?
So, just to clarify, the hours are 9 to 6 or 9 to 5?
He's, he's, on here, on this, on here...
Because there's, there's a different issue. There's the event, there's the entertainment portion within the event.
That's 1 to 4:30.
And he's, right, and he's trying to mirror the liquor license a little bit after and before and after it. So, because I did have the lieutenant look at that, because he got this application.
Right. So the lieutenant's recommending that the serving be conducted between noon and 5:00 PM?
That's his recommendation.
All right.
Then I will go with the lieutenant's recommendation for that.
All right. Second?
And you're also getting the entertainment license listed.
Correct.
So you could just sign at the bottom of that application, right?
It says signature of Board of Health.
No, not that page, the middle page, right there at the bottom of that.
You know, we probably should have a place to sign.
Well, because the other permits will be made up.
I know.
And the Board of Health, the other departments are aware of it, the event.
All right.
We'll just, we'll put the lieutenant's, then what's the serving, we'll put that in there. Please. Because I think state law is noon anyway on Sunday.
It's not going to be before that.
Somewhere on the bottom.
Yes, it's St. Patrick's Parade, so, just it.
All right. The next thing is concerning monies coming from the Department of Environmental Protection. And this is our recycling dividend, dividends program. The town of Southwick earned nine points, and received $5,400. And we need a motion authorizing the chair to accept this and sign it.
Motion for the chair to sign.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right. Is Troy coming or?
He's Troy.
He's Troy.
He's got, he got called away on other VFW.
Oh, okay.
Can I stand?
No, no, sir. Come on, come on up to the table. Come on up to the table.
I haven't seen you guys in a while.
You have our attention.
I am representing Troy Hanky on behalf of Ranford W. Kellogg Veterans of Foreign Horse Post 872 here in Southwest Mass, and it has to do with the war memorial within the center of town. Between the VFW and the American Legion, came up with an idea of veterans that live in this town, but enlisted in another town and went off to serve in war. And the town that they had enlisted from does not have a memorial honoring them. What we would like to see and propose is that the monument here in town, they update it with the citizens that have lived in Southwick, you know, after they got out of the service. They served in a war zone, and they've been living, they either moved here within five years of getting out of the service and have lived here continuously, or we have a couple of members that moved here, you know, a few years after that, and they've lived here for at least 50 years. And we, and their names are not on any other town monument or memorial, and we'd like to see that put up here in Southwick. The qualifications would be, is they have to have an honorable or a general discharge. They, if they have a undesirable, a bad conduct, or a dishonorable, they cannot be put on the monument. They have to have served in a war zone. Now, the Korean War is still under an armistice, but the war only went from 1950 to 1953. So, some of these people have gone in the Army or the, I don't know if the Air Force has a base there or not? Do you know?
In...
Korea.
Yes.
Okay. They basically would not...
South Korea.
Pardon me?
South Korea.
South Korea. Well, I call it Korea.
There's a base there that's split, actually, there's two bases, two Air Force bases in Korea. And one of them, probably both of them, I've only been on one, and it's split between, one side is the Korean base, other side is the American side.
Okay. But anyways, they would not be eligible because even though they, they are eligible for the VFW, they're, and they get imminent danger pay or what we call combat pay or whatever, the war, there's no really, it's not a hot war. So they would not be eligible. People that have served in Iraq, Afghanistan, Vietnam, like I said, Korea during the time, World War II, that's a large theater because you had it in the Pacific, the Atlantic, Europe and Asia. They would be eligible, too. But they had to have moved here within five years, or they have been living in the town of Southwick for at least 40 years, continuous.
How about World War?
And they can't be on any other war memorial.
Are you, are you getting people that are coming to you that are members of both groups that are raising these issues?
Yes.
Whose names couldn't be on there now because of the eligibility requirements?
Right. Well, this goes back to what we created...
We drafted it.
With Troy last year.
Yeah.
Remember, we sat down and did all this.
Right, so this, so essentially what you're, what you're talking about now would be an amendment to that other policy.
No.
I think it's the same policy.
It's the same policy.
It's the same policy.
The same one already adopted.
So if Troy was here tonight, he'd be saying...
Well, he's going to submit it in writing after it.
Yes. But yeah, yeah, but basically what Troy wanted to say tonight basically was, he is ready, and he felt you guys were ready to now finally look at creating that stone.
Oh, the next panel.
Right, raising the funds.
Which has already been set in policy.
Which is, we've already done this part for the most part. You guys were going to tweak it, which we, that's your desire to tweak the little things because it's your deal.
We did tweak it at a meeting. We did tweak it at, one of our meetings.
Yes.
Like I said, I don't know about the Legion, but we did tweak it.
Right.
And that's where we came up with, like I said, you know, you take some of the surrounding towns, they don't, Southwick has the memorial.
Yes.
Now, the Vietnam part, there are members, there's names on that that would not be eligible for the VFW.
Right.
But they served during the Vietnam War. And there's probably names on there that, during the Korean War, that are not eligible for the VFW. And the same with World War II. You know, the World War II veterans are all in their 90s. And what this, well, is being proposed is, they can't have served during it, they have to have served in a war zone to be included on the monument. It's the same as they have now with the Afghanistan and the Iraq War. They have to have served in the war zone to be on the monument.
And everything you're saying tonight is what's already in that other policy we already have?
Right.
So it's just a matter of getting ready to start erecting and developing the next panels.
Right.
And where they'll be placed.
There's only going to be one more.
All right. Let me ask a couple of questions, just for clarification, because hope's over there, right? So, what you just mentioned about the current monument, where it has names of Vietnam veterans, for example?
Vietnam era.
Right.
Right.
But people that actually were in combat in Vietnam would, they be eligible to...
Well, no.
No, because they're already on a monument?
Right, they're already, all right, if, all right. I grew, I enlisted from Granville.
Okay.
Okay. Granville does not have a monument for Korean veterans and Vietnam veterans.
Okay.
Okay. Now, the thing would be, if my name was put on this, it could not be put on Granville.
Okay.
And that's the way that goes.
All right.
This all started because we had a gentleman who passed away about, maybe now, probably two years ago, and the young man that spearheaded it had recently passed away.
Uh, Rick, Rick Tepoe.
Yeah, so Rick came to me.
Yeah.
And we went through this with Carl, and basically, a granddaughter said, geez, he's lived in town forever.
Right.
I'd love to see him on the monument. It didn't work that way, because he didn't enlist out of here.
Right.
And that created that open door, and these guys and everyone else was like, well, they don't go on our existing monuments, because those folks enlisted out of here.
All right. So anybody on, currently on a monument?
Is on a monument.
On a monument.
This is, this is the take care of those folks that went to, went somewhere and served in, as you get, whatever you guys really call it, and I'm not that guy, so I'm not going to screw it up and don't write that down. But came back and decided, one day, we're going to land in Southwick.
Yeah.
And they've been here 50 years and doing their part.
Well, it's 40 years.
Whatever it is, 40 years.
Because...
Yeah. How many years have you been here?
I originally moved here in 1977.
Right.
I left in 79, but I came back a couple, what?
Broken service.
Yeah, we're going to check it. We're going to go back.
I don't know. I bought land in 80, and then we moved here in 82.
Right.
So no, I lived at Captain Fowler's in 77. 77 to 79.
So this really is just, we've already done the policy.
Yeah.
It's more about, as Troy nicely said, and his exact word was something about, well, since you're the guru for fundraising, Mr. Dede, we'd love to come in front of you and, hey, we only need five or six grand, just make it work. And I said, well, that's funny, because the 250th anniversary is coming up, and I've been tasked to raise about 100 grand. I said, so for some crazy reason, Troy, you're on the back burner. I don't know why, I don't know what it is.
As long as he knows that and appreciates that.
And he did. And he said, okay, but he goes, let's just get that ball rolling.
Yeah.
So, that's what they're really, he was hoping the press would be here.
All right. Last, last question, then. World War I veterans.
They're, they would be put on it, too.
Okay.
If they moved here.
Okay.
And, you know, within five years of getting out of the service.
Yep.
And then they spend their, or they moved here and they lived here for 40 years.
Yep.
The reason they're saying is because, I don't know if you remember Tommy Bogus?
Yep.
How long was he, he was out less than 20 years. He was a Vietnam veteran.
Right.
But he got exposed to Agent Arnn so bad. I've got, you know, ailments from that also.
Yep.
So, but he went within, so, he, you know, he came from Southwick, so he was on it, but that's the problem, especially to Vietnam. And you're going to start finding that out with the Iraq War vets and everything else with the burn pits.
Yep.
They're going to be dying prematurely, too, because of stuff like that.
Yep.
But, like I said, you know, so they say, within five years, then they could be on it, and they've lived here continuously. If they moved here within five years, lived here for nine years, and then they moved away for 10 years and then came back, no, they'd have to start all over again.
Yeah.
So...
I think, Mr. Jim, one of the things we ought to do is at some point, Troy and Joe, who I know is the designee of the board on these types of matters, can approach the facility that we've used that's made these panels for us before.
Yep.
Mr. Blood is his name. And I'm sure we could get some budget estimates on what it would take to acquire the stone and the per-unit price to start, you know, what the, the different names would be to add. So we worked with him before, very successfully.
It's all good. It was basically to come in, like I said, and get the ball rolling. Me and Troy have walked, you know, we've all walked over there, and, you know, as long as we do one side of a stone for now, we're not going to get into too many ADA issues and so on and so on. But the day you have to do the backside of that stone, we then, you know, a lot more sidewalk.
Worry about that.
We're going to worry about that then, you know, so...
I don't, I don't know if it would be like, you probably have a relative that's World War I.
Well, I...
Or had one.
There's, it's not a relative.
Oh, friend?
It's a family friend.
Okay.
And as a matter of fact, I spoke about it when I spoke at the American Legion ceremony, you know, and Warren Chapman.
Okay. I've heard the name, but...
Right. Chappie was a well-known figure, you know, lived on Hillside.
Isn't he the crazy one that flew planes?
No, no.
But that, what it would be is, it would like, my personal feelings, you know, they'd have, you know, it'd have to be design panel or whatever, would have to really vote on it, but you do, you know, those that from World War I, World War II.
Yep.
Korea.
Vietnam.
Vietnam would be the latest one.
Yep.
Then you'd have it for Desert Storm. Yeah, because that was a declared war.
Desert Storm.
And then the ones you have now, because Beirut, uh...
That was a conflict.
Huh? Yeah, that was just, that wasn't considered a...
Yeah. Troy knows all that stuff.
Yeah, Troy was up on it.
Right, he could, he could help us visualize how to design the components within the panel.
There is, there was a Southwick resident. In fact, he was a graduate from a high school that was killed in Beirut.
Correct.
Yep.
He was in the Beirut bomb, but...
Yeah, his name is on the plaque.
Up at the high school.
Up at the high school. Maybe that could be, you know, but these are things that could be ironed out during the whole process.
Actually, Beirut, if you served there, which I did...
You should be eligible for the VFW.
Right. I am.
Okay.
Just doesn't like you guys, I guess, I don't know.
No, I haven't. The commander and I, I challenged, I said, you joined the Legion?
I joined.
He says, we'll do it. He hasn't done it yet.
Yeah. How about if I join?
You've been threatening to join for how many years?
I don't know, only for the past couple of months. The only reason I'm doing this to irritate you.
So, Mr. Chair, you need a motion of the board to, Mr. Dede or we're all set?
I think Mr. Dede has always been doing that role. We already voted to accept the policy.
Yep, that's fine.
I'll attach it to the minutes.
We're just going to...
Reflect Mr. Dede is the designee to, to secure the budget estimates.
There you go.
Yeah.
In your spirit, Tim.
Yeah, yeah, it's all good. Well, between both Legion and VFW, I was just going to write a check for 2,500 each, and we're all set, so.
Yeah.
There's no real fundraising.
Doing some fundraising.
Yeah. Yeah, it got real quiet in here, did you notice?
Crickets.
Now we can...
Oh, it's all good.
We probably should do, and some, because I know with the Vietnam memorials, the Vietnam part was updated, that the Legion and the VFW both did fundraisers to help offset it, and they did it also with the one that's there, the addition that was put up a couple years ago.
Yep.
So, I believe the, between the two of us, we could do the fundraiser.
Oh, yeah. Because we know it was a lot, we did a really big part of that, and Pawalary stepped up and did all this network.
Yeah.
Which just was the icing on the cake. It, you know, that was huge.
Big time.
Yeah.
All right, we've got a plan.
Thank you very much.
We thank you, gentlemen.
All right. No, thank you very much for your time.
All right.
We do appreciate it.
We promise Troy all kinds of new positions for him to work on. They appointed you to all kinds of stuff, Troy. I'm not even sure.
Did you want to, did you want to make him the troon officer, like, while he's not here?
Well, he's the reason I'm on the 250 Parade Committee.
Yeah. Good old Troy.
Jim, Jim Putnam approached me at church. I said, well, Troy's on here. Jim, Jim Putnam approached me at church, and said, well, Troy's on there. I says, well, I guess I can do it too.
Great.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, gentlemen.
All right, next thing is a Mass Cultural Council, allocation of six thousand five hundred dollars for the cultural council. I need a motion authorized the chair to sign.
Second.
All in favor? Aye, unanimous. All right, next is Select Board. Southwick Clerical Union would like to request taking off our half-day before Christmas, half-day before New Year's, and combine them into a full day to be used the day before December, before Christmas, December twenty-fourth.
Yeah, it's just moving the, the New Year's half-day, because the other thing is already a half-day, right? When you think about it right here, see, that's already a half-day here?
Yeah.
So, it would just be taken like this half-day and moving it to that, making it one whole day.
Which we've done probably for the past-
Oh, yeah. Century.
Yeah.
Need a motion, or?
We need a motion.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
We are signing it.
Signing it.
All right, next is from Lieutenant Robert Landis, and this is concerning a flag presentations on October eighteenth.
It's Friday.
Yeah. This Friday.
I, I believe it's the same organization that's running the, the Veterans Race this weekend.
It is.
Yeah.
Yes.
So, they're, they're gonna be available, they're gonna be around, and they wanna do this for the public safety agencies.
So, it's three PM this Friday. Uh, boom, boom, boom. Flags that have been flown outside both departments.
They each have their own flagpole.
Yeah. Also, we would like, if possible, you could have some stop-by, I'm sure it's someone stop-by, on Sunday morning to our opening ceremonies that start at ten-thirty AM. What's? What's that for the race?
Probably.
Probably for their event, yeah.
For their event.
Right, but I don't think they were looking for the board to do that. They were looking for the police to do that.
Yeah, 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 I think it was.
That letter went to the police.
Okay.
All Bobby did.
When I called Bobby today about liquor issues, he had borrowed up, you know, oh, by the way, I said, well, you gotta send us a letter. So, he must've just-
Forwarded it out. All right.
So, three o'clock on Friday if we're available.
Okay, so can you have Cindy, if she's here, just send out a reminder at noon time on Friday?
If someone sent us a reminder.
Okay, uh, I see this-
See, we cut down two trees.
We cut down two trees, but I, I just don't see the new, didn't we just say to make a new application?
Um, you, when you raised the issue, you had wanted to see what Vivian might have discussed in the seventies into the eighties, because you thought it was a town meeting vote, so we went through twelve years of town reports.
And you didn't find anything.
We didn't find anything, and then, and then we moved on to the minutes of those years.
Okay.
And we have not found anything yet either. We did find a lot of things that talked about needing the police to know on Fridays, which all that is done now.
Right.
So, I think what you wanna do is you could probably make your own, you know, vote to just amend the current application that's missing that limitation.
Which always was on the application, it was.
Right. So, so, well, then your vote could say to restore it.
Well, I don't see anything wrong with that, and Mr. Mogul made a very good point, and if we have an issue, I guess we could always go to the next special or annual town meeting and, and put some teeth in it if we need it.
Well, yeah, it just comes out, how can you enforce it, and who enforces it, and I get it, and ninety-nine point nine percent of the people will go by by the-
Right.
The three times, or whatever it is, but-
And I think that Carl makes a good point. If you're doing more than that, you're operating a business.
Then it becomes a zoning thing.
Then it becomes a zoning thing.
It was a zoning issue, yeah.
Right? So, I, I, I would certainly accept a motion to restore the, I, all I can remember is all I said was two, two times a year, but Cindy says they've been doing it three times a year, so.
Sure.
I'll second that, yeah.
So, what are you saying, two or three?
I defer to the wisdom of the chair.
Yeah. All the wisdom in the world of the chair, yeah. The man behind the curtain.
I'm gonna-
The wizard of arms.
I'm gonna just say two.
Halloween's coming.
Two, fine.
So moved.
Second.
I wanted three, but if, if, if the vote is for two, then I'll, I'll second that motion for two.
All right, all in favor? Aye.
So, it's two.
It's two.
See, this is why you need a law camp meeting, so you can have a debate on the issue.
All right, that's every race-
The cost of printing of this, of this stuff three times now, the taxidermist is now a hundred dollars.
Just because of the ink we use.
Yeah, because we each got-
I each got it, and there's two in my pile, and my thing from this week.
Right, yeah.
And next week, there'll be another one, because approved the minutes of the meeting, so we'll have four sets of them.
Tell her not to do that. Okay, we will go to, threw that back in there. Is this one different?
Three letters.
All right, I'm back on my agenda, not on the agenda, because I must've thrown it back in there. If it's anything different.
You're, you're, you're at the end.
Okay, so I'm just gonna go back to this one, and if it's different from-
Amendment number one. You wanna use the agenda?
You're fine. It's right, I'm sharing it with the chair. We're good.
Okay.
So, you just have-
All right, old business, animal parade. I think we've already discussed it. It's this Sunday, rain day, it's the twenty-seventh, but it looks like the weather's gonna be beautiful.
Yeah, we're fine.
Uh, I think we're all working with Mr. Paul Verhary, you know, so I, I-
Yeah, I think it launches it too, so you better be there by one-thirty, right?
Yeah, and the rotary, uh, this was a topic of discussion at the Rotary meeting, so Rotary had discussed it, so there may be some rotarians that are showing up too.
They have animals?
Um, I think they'd be performing other functions.
Oh, really?
And I guess a lot of interest is those who will be wearing different colored uniforms, clean apron, with a wheelbarrow, shovel. Rotary got that job this year?
Rotary's got the job? Oh, that's, I got kettle corn to make, so.
The rotarians were referencing that the selectmen had that job, but they were going to be there to watch the selectmen.
And I heard there's more horses this year.
As long as they don't bring those big oxen. Those were the killer last year.
I'm sure there's plenty of horse shit going around, but I don't know how much we're picking up.
All right, so we all know about that. Boom. Veterans Day Parade, eleven-eleven? Okay. North Pond Ceremony. See, that's why I thought it was the seventeenth, because that's what she put down.
Right, it did say the seventeenth, and I corrected on the amended agenda.
All right, so it's not the seventeenth, it's the twenty-
Seventeenth.
Right.
Right, I did pick the, I, I did, when I came across it.
See, you thought I was crazy.
We should have our own lane.
He thought I was crazy when I insisted it was the seventeen.
That was the early part of the day.
That's the practice.
All right. All right, um, any other old business? Old business? No, all right.
Well, actually-
Yeah, there was that time.
Just one time.
No, um, we're gonna be, uh, last time we met, I had informed you, we had six RFP documents for the fire station repairs.
Correct.
So, the group narrowed it down to three, and we're interviewing two tomorrow and one on Thursday.
Okay.
So, that is happening.
Hey, why are we talking about work and stuff like that? I, I've gone by-
And the fire alarms are working.
I've gone by the building that we authorized the police to rehabilitate, and, and I haven't seen any work started on that yet.
When did they clean the backside of it?
Did they?
The backside was cleaned tonight.
Oh, they must-
This, I, I heard rumors Sunday they were down there with chainsaws.
Oh, okay, okay, that's good news.
I'll, I'll go through and check it out.
Well, I'm just, no, I, I, you know, I was just wondering.
Tonight that they had gone on the backside and go around the front.
Oh, okay, good, I was just-
Well, they've also been busy working on the range. There's been work going on down there too.
Okay, all right.
Things are happening, Russ.
Okay.
A lot of things are happening.
And then, uh, we, it is an under old business, but we do have an engagement up in, um, the Law Cabin tomorrow night.
In Holyoke.
In Holyoke.
You gotta dress up for that? What was the thought?
I think we need to dress up for that, because there's probably gonna be a few-
Mitza, mitza.
Photographers there, and I think we wanna put the towns-
Are you gonna get my tux out of the dry cleaner?
No, it is not for me.
Kidding.
Sport coat.
Okay, any other old business?
The dry cleaner closed years ago.
Do we have to?